This is the regular meeting of the Mobile City Council Tuesday, July 9th. Please stand for our invocation led by Pastor John C. George, Episcopal Church of the Good Shepherd, and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Good morning, members of the City Council.
Morning.
President, other members, staff, and staff of the mayor, all who are present. It is my privilege this morning to be here with you. And I also ask that you would remember to hold our emergency responders, our first remonders, and our prayers. As you meet them throughout the day and the season, greet them and let them know how thankful we are for their selfless service, especially during these months of the hurricane season. Let us bow our heads and offer prayers to God for a fruitful council session today. Let us pray. Gracious and ever-loving God, we thank you for the gift of life and the abundance you provide each and every day. Open our hearts, ears, and minds of those who deliberate today on behalf of our beautiful city. Fill them with your spirit that they may earnestly pursue the good of all who live in this city. That those who have may have an abundance that overflows. That those who need may receive. And that all may benefit and grow together in love, love of each other, and for the great and good of this city, this we ask in Jesus' name. Amen.
Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag. One nation under God, liberty, justice for all.
Roll call, Vice President Manzi. Councilmember Richardson.
Here.
Councilmember Small.
Here.
Councilmember Williams.
Here.
Councilmember Dave.
Here.
Councilmember Rich.
Here.
Councilmember Gregory.
Here.
Statement of rules.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Good morning, everybody.
Good morning.
On behalf of the Mobile City Council, I welcome each of you to our business meeting. These are our rules and procedures. One, turn off all cell phones and noise-making devices. If you are called to speak to the council, we ask that you come down to the podium, speak into the microphone, state your name and address for the record. When speaking, always face and address the chair. No person should debate with the chair or any other council member. And you will have five minutes to state the business you signed up to speak on. At the end of the four minutes, a buzzer will sound indicating that you have one minute to wrap up your discussion. You are to be seated when you are finished speaking and when your five minutes are up. Madam Clerk, we are ready to proceed.
Approval of minutes of July 2nd.
So moved.
Second.
In discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Pass.
Communications from the mayor.
Nothing here, thank you.
Adoption of the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
In discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
In the polls? Pass.
Appeals, we have requests for a waiver of the noise ordinance July 12th and 13th from 5:00 PM until 10:00 PM, and July 14th from 3:00 PM until 8:00 PM on Conti Street.
So moved.
Second.
In discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
In opposed? Pass.
Public hearings, today is a public hearing to declare structures, public nuisances, fix the cost for demolition of structures and for securing, fixing the cost for securing of structures. At 612 Houston Street, 110 Elmira Street, 1462 Fairfield Street, 1230 Shore Acres Drive, 1709 Griffin Street, 2701 Elsmore Street, 955 Maryland Street, 1154 Texas Street, 1405 Stewart Road, and 5727 Deerwood Drive.
Is anyone here to speak for or against this matter? So please come down to the podium.
Good morning, my name is Marie Davis. My address is 3150 Calais Street, Mobile, Alabama.
Can you speak a little louder?
Yes, my name is Marie Davis. I'm here regarding the property at 1462 Fairfield Street. I'm counsel for Wells Fargo Bank. Wells Fargo was notified of this matter regarding a lien on the property, and I'm here to inform the council that we have, Wells Fargo has no interest in this property. We would request to be removed from notice regarding any further proceedings. And this is the property at 1462 Fairfield Street.
And you say you all don't have any more interest in the property?
Wells Fargo does not hold a lien on the property, no sir.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Mr. Davis, Dr. Mark Cunningham, there.
He gave the high sign. He's got.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else to speak or against any of this matter? May come down. If not, this conclude the plub of hearing.
Presentation of petitions and other communications to the council, Reggie Hill.
Mr. Chairman, members of the council, in the absence of our mayor, to the citizens and stakeholders of Mobile, good morning. Reggie Hill, 1007 Center Street. I rise today to speak about action that the City Council can take to improve public safety. When there isn't sufficient action, particularly within the city, basically from the administration. For the record, my organization Success for the Future has done an exploratory study over the past three years about how we can actually improve public safety. Now, I will say this. A lot of the incidents that are occurring in the arena of our adults, a lot of that stuff is going to be hard to change. But we must look at the future. And we can reshape the mindsets of our young people. And we can start now investing in their lives and in their future to improve the quality of life. Now, I know the response would be, that's not something that we are over. I hear that often from the City Council, saying the responsibilities.
Mr. Hill, I missed that. You said the response would be what?
You would say that this is a response that the City Council, something that the City Council is not over, a responsibility of the administration. And last week, I was also told that if I had an incident that I was concerned about, that I should write a formal complaint. I believe that I've turned in a lot of formal information to this council that has not necessarily had any regard. We also heard about that certain communities don't report what's going on. I've reported a lot of stuff to this council and administration over the past three years. I don't believe that is pretty accurate. We also look at the idea that we had a Concerned Citizens Committee created, and we said that there was inactivity within that. I believe that if we take the time to actually form a committee involved and engage with people who are actually on the grounds, in the trenches, to get this thing done, we can actually make this happen. So, let me get to my points here. Trying to give you insight without going too far into it because last week I was told that I was too expressive on the ideas of what was actually going on in our city. Our chairman alluded that I was asking him questions that he didn't know the answer to. Yet he answered one of those questions and he said, yes. The question that I asked was, does the City Council have oversight over the Mobile Municipal Court? And it said, yes, it does, particularly its judges. That's what our chairman said. That is answering the question. Now, this is how the City Council has the ability to work and improve public safety in this community. When the police present a case, it goes before the judges, which is the oversight body here. So that means the buck should stop there. The corruption should be ending there. Any of these incidents, if we don't have something in place to assess how this is happening, we're going to see where we have 30% capacity over within our Mobile Metro Jail. We're going to see that we have the Alabama Department of Corrections under complete scrutiny from the US Department of Justice because of the conditions that we have within the system. I explained to you last week on how a cop pulled a citizen over for a traffic violation that was unlawful. Unlawful. The law didn't even exist. And yet we have a judge that allowed this to continue. A judge that found a citizen guilty. A judge that found a citizen guilty, found a citizen guilty for something that doesn't exist, but there was no oversight. There was no measure. So my question is this. When will the council, if there hasn't been something put in place, when will there be something for an oversight measurement within our municipal court system? When will we have something to assess what the judges are doing? When will we have something to ensure that people are treated with justice and equality as they move forth within the judicial system? When will we know these answers? Because I myself went through this, and I know who to come to. I know who to speak to. I know how to get things done on my own representing myself. But how many thousands of people, let's be serious here, how many thousands of people have went through this court system not knowing what to do? How many thousands of people without the resources have had to be obliging to what has been forced on them by our police system because they didn't know what to do? Or they didn't have the resources? Now, I could come down here easily and raise a lot of saying. I could come down easily and be very emotional. But that's not going to solve anything. But if we don't start doing something now, I saw something today that I was very inspired by. We're going to spend $93,000 a year for peer mentoring. Peer mentoring. And that's on the adult stage. Why can't we even think just a minimal amount of that for people who are in the trenches and actually already getting it done? And so I hope that you will consider this. I sent information to the administration, I sent information to the council. The chairman told me last week he was going to speak to me. I still haven't heard from the chairman.
All right, thank you, Mr. Hill. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I have a couple things I want to say. Mr. Hill said again that he has appealed to the council regarding the incident with the police. I told Mr. Hill last week that his complaint should be filed with the Police Department. If the police did something inappropriate, in your opinion, file your complaint with the Police Department. They have a whole section that, all they do is investigate complaints. And there's no need to come back to the council. Got the police chief right here. If it's, this is with anybody out there in the public. If you think that a police officer behaved himself inappropriately, file a complaint with the Police Department. Go to the police headquarters, go to your closest police precinct and file a complaint. You will get a written, official written report from the chief stating what he found. Second of all, if a police officer write a ticket, you got two options. You can pay the ticket or you can go to court. If you go to court, if you agree to go to court, it's out of the council's hand. The law would not permit council members to interfere in the court procedures. We can't interfere. Whatever the jury says, what the jury say. So, if the judge issued a ruling that is not satisfactory, appeal it. Not to the council, but to another court. You can't come back to us saying that the judge, he didn't rule right, and a lot of folks in jail because the judge didn't rule right. No. Hire your lawyer and take it to another level. In fact, you could take it all the way up to the US Supreme Court. Just keep on appealing if you can't get it adjusted. But you can't come back to us. We're not in charge of the Police Department. You can't come back to us. But if it's something you want to investigate it, if you want the conduct of a police officer investigated, you believe he wrote you a ticket and you don't believe there was no law for that, file a complaint with the Police Department. And they're going to have to show you the law. This is the law he used. If he didn't, they say, we took the appropriate action. They'll tell you what to do.
Yeah, I'd like to thank Councilman Richardson. Also, that department is called the Internal Affairs Department, which is located at the police station. I mean, if any citizen have any issue with any police officer, they should file that complaint with the Internal Affairs at the police station. And I'd also like to acknowledge our police chief this morning also. Madam City Clerk? Okay.
Morning to the council.
Morning, Chief.
I just stood to say that, Councilman Richardson, you're absolutely right. The proper recourse, if someone gets a ticket, is they can pay it or they can go to court and they can try it. He had his day in court. Judge made a ruling, and therefore, me nor the council have the ability to overturn the ruling of the court. The other part of it is anybody that gets a ticket, if their sole reason for complaint is the fact that they got a ticket, that is not a good use for internal affairs. I mean, because everybody that gets a ticket believe they don't deserve a ticket. The court heard the facts in this particular case. The court ruled in a particular manner, and therefore, we stand behind what the officer did in that particular case. I do encourage anybody here that has a legitimate complaint as it relates to our law enforcement officer, our Internal Affairs Division is open. We do take those complaints. We do investigate those complaints, as Councilman Richards indicated. And we will provide a formal writ notice of the action. We won't tell you how we took discipline if it was warranted, but we will take the appropriate action to address those concern. And I just remind everybody here that when we go to court, that's the reason we have a court, is for them to rule on the rule of law. And that we should stand by that in a proper process to grieve something like that is through an appeal. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
Mr. Woods. The appeal, the appeal from a ruling of the Municipal Court is to the Circuit Court of Mobile?
That is correct.
Is that correct?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Madam City Clerk?
Ordinance is held over.
Madam City Clerk, could we take those separately?
Oh, okay. 64025 Rezone Property, located at 6050 and 6086 White Bark Drive, from R2, R3, and B2 to R2.
So moved.
In discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
In opposed? Pass six.
64026 Rezone Property, located at 3809 Moffett Road, from B1 to B3.
So moved.
Second.
In discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
In opposed? Obeying. Pass five.
64027 Rezone Property, located at 700 Bishop's Lane North, from R1 to B1.
Second.
In discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
In opposed? Pass.
Consent Resolutions held over, 6594 Resolution supporting the return of Amtrak Passenger Rail Service to Alabama.
I'd like to offer a substitute to that resolution, which, and I'm just going to read the, not the preamble, but the resolution itself.
I think we first have, need to have a motion and a second, and then you come back. So moved.
Second.
In discussion?
Now. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Mobile, Alabama, as follows. "In the past few years, Mobile has made great strides in rejuvenating our city by creating a dedicated funding source for infrastructure improvements. These efforts have spurred incredible growth and investment in the city. The return of passenger train service would provide the citizens of Mobile a full range of transportation options for travel along the Central Gulf Coast. That responsible state, county, and city officials are urged to examine the feasibility of a return of passenger rail service to the Gulf Coast, and that the results of this examination be shared with state, county, and city officials for possible future action." So I'm putting that on the table as an amendment to the original one.
Second.
In discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
In opposed? Going back to the original motion?
All in favor? You make the all in favor.
Okay. In discussion?
Now.
All in favor?
Aye.
In opposed? Pass six.
Resolutions being held over, 21622, 623 and 624. I'm sorry. 21622 Authorized Contract with Jay Hunt Enterprises General Contractors for Crawford-Murphy Park Rating and Drainage Improvements. 21623 Authorized Contract with Christian Prius Landscape Architecture for Langham Park Implementation and Phasing Plan. 21624 Authorized Contract with Harris Contracting Services for Melvana Park Field Lighting Softball Fields.
So moved.
Second.
In discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
In opposed? Pass six.
Resolutions held over, 21626 Authorized Contract with Johnson Controls Fire Protection LP for fire sprinkler system and backflow preventer inspection and testing various city facilities. 21627 Authorized Performance Contract with McKinney Place. 21628 Authorized Contract with Rocher Electric Company for Arthur R. Outlaw Convention Center Ballroom Lighting Controls Upgrade. 61629, 630, 631, and 632 are approving agreements for a petition of lump sum settlement and approving agreement for settlement and release of claims for Jerome Leland, Lynette Beverly, Charlotte Beverly, Talisa Rab.
So moved. Second.
In discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
In opposed? Pass.
Ordinance is being introduced for the first time, 17028.
What should, layover to July 23rd?
Can I get a second?
Second.
In discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
In opposed? Pass.
Consent Resolutions being introduced for the first time, 08634 through 40645.
What should suspend the rule for immediate consideration of resolution 08634 through 40645?
Second.
Oh, yeah, in discussion?
Nope.
All in favor?
Aye.
In opposed?
Nope.
08634 Approved Requisitions Over $7,500 For The Week Of July 1st. 37635 Recommend Approval To The ABC Board For Issuance Of A Lounge Retail Liquor Class 1 License For Alabama Music Box On Conception Street. 40636, 637, 638, 639, 640, 641, 642, 643, 644, 645 Are Declaring Structures Public Nuisances And Ordering Them Demolished And Fixing The Cost For Demolition Of Structures And Also Fixing The Cost For Securing Of Structures."
So moved.
Second.
In discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
In opposed? Pass six.
Resolutions being introduced for the first time, 01646 through 21653.
Madam Clerk, we have, our Mr. Chairman, there's someone in the audience here that is appearing confused, so...
Yeah, I apologize. Tom Walsh, I'm an attorney for the liquor license, the Alabama Music Box that just came up. I just want to make sure that, did it, were they granted a liquor license?
Yes.
Okay, that's what I thought I heard. Make sure I heard that correctly.
You're welcome.
Good to see you.
Madam Clerk.
Resolutions being introduced for the first time, 01646 through 21653. Said resolutions will lay over for a week.
By council rules, this will lay over for a week.
But I already said that.
But, we were interrupted, so I just. It's retaking. Sorry. Announcements.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I'm going to hear from the great district number one, Councilman Fred Richardson.
Thank you very much. I just want to say something. I spoke about this last week. It is the Frauta Street Drainage Construction Project. The project is at a standstill. And the people are outraged. Friday, no one was there working. Yesterday, no one was there working. I haven't gone by there today. So it seems to me, and I wrote the mayor, I sent him a picture to show there was no one working on the project, I did not get a response from the mayor. I don't know what's happening. People are asking me, what's happening? How can they, it is impossible to complete that project when no one reports to the project to go to work? If you have absolutely no workers on the project, they can't complete it. So, the reason for them not to be out there, I don't have a clue. I'm going by there again today. Now, they do come by and sprinkle water to cells of dust. That's a good thing. But in terms of them trying to complete the project, I don't see anyone out there. I'm asking the mayor to please join me, do whatever he can to get those workers out there and keep them out there until they can finish the project. It seems to me this is a start, it's just like they did when, at Publix. They're starting, this is a starting project. I don't know why they're starting, but they're starting, and we're going to lose a number of those businesses, and it's more than, it's more than them going out of business. We're going to lose employees that they have hired at those businesses. So it's going to be very costly if they can't get out there and complete that project. They have suffered enough, and I'm ready for them to get going on that project. I don't know what else we have to do. But I'm getting no response from the administration. No one is out there on the project trying to complete the project.
Thank you, Councilman Richardson. We're going to hear from the great district four, Councilman John Williams.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have nothing.
Thank you, Mr. Williams.
John Charlton has nothing.
I'm going to hear from the great district number five, Councilman Joel Dave.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would just like to remind everybody that there will be a meeting of the ad hoc committee established to look into the procedures for disposition of real property owned by the city. That committee meets on a week from today at 2:00 PM in the council conference room. It's open to the public, and we hope that, I certainly hope, at that time to complete the work of the committee. So that's 2:00 a week from today in the council conference room. Thank you.
Councilman Dave. We're going to hear from the great district number six, Councilman Bash Rich.
Thank you very much. On Tuesday, July 23rd, at 2:00 in the council's conference room, the Public Services Committee will meet, where we will be given a report from the street assessment team that the city went under contract with. Councilmembers Daves and Smalls are members of the committee. Of course, all council members are urged to attend and also hear the report, which the council had passed a number of months ago for street review and construction and repairs. On August 6th, this is somewhat tentative, so don't put it down necessarily in ink, but the committee will meet again with all utility companies. We'll get the word out to them as this firms up, hopefully in the next day or two. And there has been concerns expressed to the council about sidewalks being damaged by utility companies after they have their permits to work in the rights of way. And of course, there's other trees and things that also belong to the city that also shouldn't be damaged, and so we're asking an opportunity to meet with all utilities. And also, the permitting department or representative will be invited to talk about the permitting process that gets the word out to these utilities. Also, at that meeting a while back, we had a report from Alabama Power about the condition repairs and replacements of power poles, and we'll ask Alabama...
Alrighty, now we're going to hear from the councilwoman, Gina Gregory, district number seven.
The great district seven, correct?
The greatest.
The greatest, I mean, I was, I was waiting for that part of my introduction, thank you, Mr. Chair. Just want to remind everyone, drainage work is ongoing on Spring Hill Avenue, it's located near I-65, there are cones out and signs warning people about the work, they look like they are getting pretty much down to the end because the curbs and gutters are going back in, but if that is one of your routes, just be warned that drainage work is ongoing there at Spring Hill Avenue. The other announcement that I have is one that I've made several times before, but I do want to remind everyone about Lavreta Park, that's where we have Market in the Park, Lavreta Park is located on Old Shell Road, the Market in the Park days are Thursdays from 3:00 until 6:00, and it only goes until the end of July, so go on out and take advantage of Market in the Park on a Thursday, you'll see some of the same type vendors out there as you do downtown on Saturdays, but it's a great way to get all of your fresh fruits and vegetables from local folks. So again, that's Thursdays from 3:00 until 6:00 at Lavreta Park on Old Shell Road. And that's it for me, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Councilwoman Gina Gregory, from the great district of number seven.
Correct.
Alright. Greetings to the citizens of district three, tonight we have a very important community input meeting where you can provide your feedback on the plan of the future of Perch Creek Parks. Perch Creek Parks will be including Helenwood Park, Matinale Park, and also the Old Smalls Sewer Plant Property. This is your chance to weigh in on the very important matters in our community, that meeting will be on tonight, on July the 9th, at 6:30 PM, at the Riverside Baptist Church in the Fellowship Hall at 3130 Dolphin Island Parkway, inviting all the citizens, you know, in district three, especially south of the DIP Bridge, I-10 Bridge, excuse me, inviting all the citizens to come out this evening at 6:30 PM, again, for your input on this very important factor that will be affecting our district and not, not only our district, but our city, our greatest, our great city. Also, citizens, remember if you have any overgrown grass, blighted properties in your community, in your neighborhood, please dial 311. Again, it's the administration that acknowledged and addressed these issues, you're more than welcome to call a councilperson, your councilperson, or myself, but again, this is an administrative issue, and again, we ask that each citizen throughout the city of Mobile, especially in district three, if you have any property that is blighted, overgrown in your neighborhood and your community, please dial 311. If you cannot dial 311 from your phone directly, dial Erica 251-208-5311. Do I have a motion to adjourn this meeting?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Meeting adjourned.
Wanna, wanna top that?